Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, I want to give the following instructions in case of an emergency. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors on your right. Then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross the street into either of our parking lots to be safely away from the building. Our staff will help provide direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room to the hallway where we will remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter in the building, we will run if there is an accessible path, try to evacuate the premises, hide if you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you're less likely to be found, lock any doors that you can, fight as a last resort and only if your life is in immediate danger. Our staff will provide assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Staff will be running too. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to take off your pants.
Enjoy God, our Father, we give thanks for the blessings of a new day. Thank you for the blessings of being able to share together in joy and be glad and be asked to express a blessing upon El Paso, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio. It helps us to realize and recognize it could happen here as we join together, keep the force of love and blessings to each other. We ask that you bless us in every way possible, in Christ our Lord.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, elected, let's see, Mr. Kevin Anderson, one of our former county commissioners, please raise your hand, the senator. We try to at least recognize the past elected officials. I think I saw Mr. Over the Wood have come in. Please raise your hand, county councilman. Any other elected officials? Moving on, next is John Harden. Minutes from our previous meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, is there a motion?
We'll move with the second.
Questions? All in the papers, nobody going to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Next is a public hearing is called to all to receive citizen comments and questions relative to the community development block grant infrastructure project closeout. At this time, I'd like to call the public hearing to all. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 5th, 2019, 7:00 P.M. In the Commissioners' Room on the second floor of the Edgecombe County Administration Building, located at 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 2786. Purpose of this public hearing is to remove, review, and assess the performance of the county's FY14 Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure, CDVGI, project for sewer to standard speed and allow residents an opportunity to express their views. The total project budget includes approximately 2.98 million CDVGI funds, 66% total project cost from the Nocon Development Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, Division of Water Infrastructure, DWI, approximately 1.54 million of USDA Rural Development Grants and Loan Funds, county funds. But these funds, the county extends the Santerse Sewer to low and moderate income LMI households in the town's speed and vicinity to prevent health and environmental issues related to the failing subject tank. All activities are now complete and the county is in the process of closing the facility. This project installed approximately 13,500 linear feet of 8-12 inch gravity sewer lines, 48 manholes, 41,300 linear feet of 6-inch forest man, 65 sewer service lateral connections, 28 CDVGI funded, three new pump stations, and rehabilitation of air pump stations. Persons having any questions concerning the CDVGI program are urged to attend the public hearing, make their views known, and submit oral written comments prior to the submission of closeout information to DWI. There will also be a short presentation on fair housing and different things to CDVGI projects. A public information file at this County Administration Building and the Assistant County Manager's Office and the DEQ on request. For additional information or to submit written comments, please contact Franchi Mondo, Court to the Board, at the Edgecombe County Administration Building, P.O. Box 10, 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 2786. Phone number 252-641-7834, fax 252-641-0456. Comments should be posted more than later than August 9th, 2019. A written response will be made within 10 business days. The county does not discriminate based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or male status, union mission, access to treatment, or employment in the CDVGI program. Non-English speaking persons and persons with disabilities or other laws require special accommodation. Please contact Franchi Mondo, Court to the Board, 252-641-7834, or 1-800-735-2966, or Relay Service 711. At least 48 hours prior to the scheduled meeting. This information is available in Spanish or any other language upon request. Please contact County Administration, 252-641-7834, P.O. Box 10, 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 2786, for accommodation for this request. Senator Wiggins, Chairman, the gentleman.
Comment, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Peters noted in the public notice, this is regarding the closeout of infrastructure project of the town's speed and vicinity. This is what we refer to as Page 1 of the project that includes both USDA Rural Development Funds as well as Community Development Block Grant Funds. So in particular, this is closed out for the CDVGI portion of it. Before you open up the public hearing, I would ask that you allow Mr. Will Larson, who is with the Wooten Company, who's going to come and provide us some information regarding fair housing for this project.
Good evening, Mr. Peters. Other commissioners, I am Will Larson with the Wooten Company. If you will please bear with me. I do have three pages that I'm required to read as Mr. Peters just stated, some of which will be repeats, but the visitor requirement is part of the closeout process. If we'll settle in, I'll get to it as quickly as we can. For Edgecombe County, this will be our 2014 Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Program, also known as CDVGI, sewer to town speed and vicinity for public hearing for project closeout. The purpose of the hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to discuss the program's performance for the fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Project for the sewer system improvements project and allow residents an opportunity to express their views. In December 2014, the county was awarded CDVGI funds from NC Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure, approximately 2.81 billion USDA Rural Development Grant and loan funds were committed, as well as county funds. The August 2016 amendment reduced the scope of the project as well as reduced USDA and county funds committed. County funds are used to cover administrative costs not covered by CDVGI. Final budget includes CDVGI, 2.981 billion USDA Rural Development, 1.523 million, county, 15,000, for a total of 4.52 million. With these funds, the county extended public sewer service to low and moderate income households to prevent public and environmental health issues related to failing subject tank systems. The Health Department conducted surveys and concluded that many subject systems were failing and properties are not large enough to repair or rebuild of these systems. If improvements were not made, subject tanks would continue to fail, environmental conditions would worsen, and families may have to be relocated. The CDVGI grant allowed the county to provide utility services to areas in need of assistance. In the August 2016 amendment prior to construction, the proposed projects have included installation of 41,450 linear feet of forest man, 13,850 linear feet of gravity sewer. Five change orders were needed throughout construction. First was to clarify measurements at three pump stations. The second adjusted the linear feet of horizontally directional drill extensions. Also included relocation of Highway 122 pump station and third road drive. Change order number three adjusted board jack measurements faced while standing on one side of the road, electrical service modifications to two pump stations. Change order number four included forest man fitting and floodway bypass and meters and valves at two pump stations. And finally, change order number five included final adjustment plant acceptance. After adjusting final plant acceptance, the final project scope includes installation of approximately 41,750 linear feet of 6-inch forest man, 13,540 linear feet of 8-12 inch gravity sewer, 49 manholes, 65 sewer service lateral connections, 28 of which were CDVGI funded, three new pump stations, and rehabilitation of one pump station. Sewer improvements generally occur within the town's speed, NC Highway 122, US Highway 258, and connect to the town principal, which is now Edgecombe Water Sewer District 16. Most work occurs within existing public railways, but easements were needed. 28 LMI households were provided new sewer connections paid with CDVGI funds. Any other new sewer service connections were funded by USDA Rural Development. Projects delays were attributed to the reduction in project scope due to CDVGI regulations regarding floodways and LMI verification of project area residents, Hurricanes Matthew and Florence, electrical service, access to pump stations, and access to properties. The state monitored the project paperwork twice for compliance. At the June 2019 monitoring, one finding, which was a violation, was noted as not being able to locate a newspaper affidavit for a care member. Other findings were not having commitments from full property owners to maintain affordable rents for one year after closeout. Citizen comments. Comments should be posted more than later than August 9th, 2019, and a written response will be made within 10 business days. Public grant documents are available upon request between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 P.M. at the County Administration Building and the Assistant County Manager's Office. For additional information or to submit written comments, please contact Franchi Mondo, Court to the Board, Edgecombe County Administration Building, P.O. Box 10, 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 27866. Phone number 252-641-7834, or fax number 252-641-0456. This information is available in Spanish or any other language upon request. Please contact County Administration at 252-641-7834, or P.O. Box 10, 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 27886, for accommodations for this request. The second document that we are required to read tonight is the fair housing statement. It is much shorter, so we're almost there. To the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners from the Wooten Company, date of August 5th, 2019, the CDVGI fair housing. As a recipient of the federal funds, the county must demonstrate efforts to affirmatively further fair housing. The Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 prohibits the denial of housing to a person based on the person's membership and one or more protected classes. It is also illegal to coerce, intimidate, threaten, or interfere with a person seeking to exercise rights under the Fair Housing Act. Protected classes are: race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, disability, or handicap. It is illegal to demonstrate against a person in provision of housing because of the person's membership in a protected class in the following situations: the advertising, terms, conditions, privileges, financing, or provision of services or facilities in connection with the sale or rental of most housing; the provision of reasonable modification to a dwelling for persons with a disability at their expense when necessary for full use and enjoyment of the dwelling; the provision of reasonable accommodations to the rules, policies, practices, and services when necessary to provide persons with a disability the equal opportunity to use and enjoy the dwelling. Compliance procedure: any person or persons wishing to file complaint of housing discrimination in the county may do so by informing the county manager at P.O. Box 10, 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, 27886. Phone number 252-641-7803. Also toll free at 1-800-735-2962, extension 711. The county shall acknowledge the complaint within 10 days in writing and inform NC DEQ and the North Carolina Human Relations Commission about the complaint. The county shall offer assistance to NCHRC in the investigation and reconciliation of all housing discrimination complaints. For more information, head office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity at 1-800-440-8099, NCHRC at 919-807-4424, or Legal Aid of North Carolina at 855-797-FAIR, which is 3247, for individual assistance. I do appreciate your patience, and that is the two public statements that have been read.
Questions? You mentioned a finding of foreign housing, a finding in the compliance.
There was a one notice, a violation that dealt with the paperwork with CDVGI.
It was just the paperwork?
Yes, sir. There was one affidavit that was missing at the time of the monitoring that has since been reconciled. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I call for public input. If there's anybody here that'd like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Is there anybody to speak? Hearing none. Would you like to adjourn the public hearing? And the recommendation is to approve is there a motion?
So moved.
Questions? All in the papers, nobody going to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved.
Mr. Wiggins, if I could just note here, one of the closeout requirements, and we do have to have this project closeout by the end of this month, is to have the public hearing as you've done tonight, and then have the board to approve the minutes from that public hearing, as you know, which normally will only happen now at your September meeting. So I would like to ask you to consider us having a call meeting before the end of August so that you can come back and approve the minutes from particular, well, a whole meeting, but in particular for the public hearing. And there may be some other bits and items we'll have at that time. You don't have to sit there right now.
I'm sitting here, thank you. Quickly, minutes together for this public meeting. If we could do that at the end, it'd just be good.
That's impossible. Can we do the minutes for this, what we just had?
Of the public hearing, question number?
We have to recess for some time to give some other opportunities to do.
Good enough. I'm not putting no, I put no pressure on you. He's just cleaned it up, boy. At this time, schedule appointment. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wiggins. First, we have Mr. Jim Rinn of Phoenix Historical Society, who's going to provide updates on some of their activities. While Mr. Rinn is making his way to the podium, I do want to point out, you do have some information that he provided that is in your packet. Some of it he made reference during his presentation.
Go ahead, Mr. Rinn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So glad to be here. My name is Jim Rinn, Vice President of Phoenix Historical Society, and by half our president, Lady Spiv, and all members of the Phoenix Historical Society. We want to thank the board, continue to support our work to recover, record, and promote the history of Edgecombe County and experience by members of African-American community. First thing I would like to do is announce to you that invite you on September 7th, passing around everybody, will be unveiling North Carolina Highway Historical Mark in Rocky Mountain. They're recognizing the 1978 sanitation work to strike. This will be the seventh North Carolina Highway Historical Marker that's been succeeded by the Phoenix Historical Society. And I think it's important for the community history, and we look forward to having a good event there September 7th at the Edgecombe Center in Rocky Mountain. In addition, we'd like to take this opportunity to share with the board some of the history that we have developed, and each member can get a copy. This is our basic pamphlet, African-Americans in Edgecombe County from slavery to freedom, the Jim Crow, 1860 to 1901. There's a copy feature from member of the board there and the county manager. And particularly, we want to highlight in terms of the history, the origin of the moving of the county line, the Nash Edgecombe County Line Railroad Track in 1871. It becomes, it's been controversial, and it continues to come up as an issue in our, in this area. But people don't know why, how it came to be at the railroad track. Briefly to say that in 1860, at the time of Civil War, Edgecombe County was one of the most wealthiest counties in Rocky Mountain, primarily because of the cotton reduction. And it was over 10,000 enslaved Africans were picking that cotton, the labor that helped make this wealth. Rocky Mountain Mills was the largest taxpayer in Edgecombe County, helping produce the cotton. And then the railroad, well, the railroad was developed by Edgecombe planters to transport cotton to the ports in Wilmington. After the Civil War, the emancipation from slavery in 1868, the Constitution, African-Americans had a right to vote, and they were elected to office in this state, including right here Henry Cherry, who lived across the street from this building, was the first African-American elected to the North Carolina House of Representatives, as well as Richard M. Johnson, first African-American elected to the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners. So across the state, at 1868, there was much progress for African-Americans and the rights of all people. But in 1870, in retaliation to that progress, the former slave owners organized a statewide campaign of terror through the Ku Klux Klan. And over the governor, over 240 acts of Klan attacks in North Carolina were later documented by Congress, and Governor William Holden called the militia to stop the Klan attacks. And over 100 suspected Klans were arrested by militia. The North Carolina Grand Dragon, who was Klan resistance times identified as former Confederate Colonel William L. Saunders, who is buried in the County Baptist Church here in Tarboro. Following this wave of terror, intimidating people at the polls, a conservative Democrats won by the majority at General Assembly of the people who elected in 1868, and began to put in place the impeachment of Governor Holden, which was the only time the government moved from North Carolina history. And then let me, the same General Assembly who was part of this, who was elected as part of the retaliation to the gains of reconstruction, the same General Assembly that removed Governor Holden began to change the boundaries of electoral units to reduce African-American representation according to the black legislators of 1871. In February 1871, the North Carolina Senate passed a bill moving the Nash Edgecombe boundary several miles east to the Wilmington and Weldon Railroad Track. This divided Edgecombe County towns of Whittakers, Battleboro, Rocky Mountain, and Sharpsburg into two counties, and transferred voters from majority-black Edgecombe County, which had elected African-Americans to office, into majority-white Nash County, which had never elected African-Americans. This move also took away half of Edgecombe County's tax revenue from the railroad and placed Rocky Mountain Mills, Edgecombe's major industry and top taxpayer, into Nash County. Both the railroad and the mill were imported to market Edgecombe's cotton, still picked by black hands who now could elect black and white Republicans into office in Edgecombe County. About 11,520 acres of land was taken from Edgecombe and given to Nash for a total sum of $800. The Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners that time, which all are the predecessors, I mean, the descendants of that board, resolved, quote, "There is a scheme afoot in the legislature to change the county line between Edgecombe and Nash. The passage of such bill would be very unjust on a large portion of the people of this county, and ordered our senator and representatives to use all influence against the passage of such a bill." Even leading elite white Democrats like Judge George Howard opposed this move, according to the Tarboro Sun, which called it, quote, "A savage move of which the entire people of Edgecombe condemned with scarcely a dissenting vote." Over 500 Edgecombe citizens signed a petition of protest to the North Carolina House Representatives, which stated, quote, "Never in the history of legislation was an act attempted to be done which would do so much injustice to a people as that proposed in the bill under consideration and constabulary, respectfully and prayerfully submitted by the people of Edgecombe County." That's according to County News and the Daily Sun. Black state senators, Henry Epps of the Halpas County, George Price of New Hanover County, and John Hyman of Warren County, opposed this bill, saying, "It will sever and divide the precincts, townships, and incorporated towns to which the railroad runs. It will create confusion and dissension among the people in that there is more than 1,000 miles of railroads running through different sections of North Carolina, and yet there is not another single mile of railroad in the state that has made a dividing line between two counties." And the Senate, by direct vote, positively refused to allow the question of a transfer to be submitted to the qualified voters who are thus transferred from one county to another like stock or dumb beast upon a farm, quoted. So that's some of the background, how this county line changed. In your packet, our researchers developed a map. And of Nash County with the yellow mark is the part of Nash County that was formerly Edgecombe. And explaining to people, why is Edgecombe's county tax rate so much higher than Nash County's? Because in this territory here, you have a lot of, all these corporate taxes going to Nash County, and they benefited for the last 148 years. And that's through this, this move, and you see what it was opposed by Edgecombe County. So you've got all this industry, for instance, you've got Cummins, you've got Pfizer, you've got... All this was, should have been in Edgecombe County, except for this unjust act of 1871 and retaliation to reconstruction and to the people of Edgecombe County. You see this, you can see this map here? This is where the county line used to be. So everything to the, it ran through the falls, and then, you can see it's superposed on a map today. That's where the county line was before 1871. The Phoenix Society is having an educational program to remember, where we're having a USC scholar named Lucas Kelly going to speak with more research on this. But it continues to be an issue, and Nash County continues to find ways to deal with Edgecombe County, and they want money. And this issue of how wealth was taken from Edgecombe County and retaliation, reconstruction, and Edgecombe has suffered in this way. Everything would be a lot more equal had the county line stayed the same, except for this, this act of, as the people of the time called it, a great injustice to the Edgecombe County. And people don't really know that.
Any questions?
Let me, if you say something about an elected official for the county commissioners back in the day, or black county commissioner?
Yeah, Richard M. Johnson was elected in 1868, county commissioner, and then Jack Nash was elected in 1870. Just African-American county commissioners. You know, we're at times, Chris. Yeah. I'm saying, Edgecombe has been a majority African-American county since during times of slavery. And when, when freedom came, the people, they opposed and elect people like yourselves to office. And it was one of the wealthiest counties that all come out. But there was retaliation came because some people didn't like that, and to undercut that, to take some wealth around. to take, to undercut that, and it takes the wealth around. This is why the county line was moved to eighteen seventy-one. And we continue to have issues to this day about that county line, about Nash and Edgecombe, and, uh, Edgecombe has been at a disadvantage since eighteen seventy-one, but the thing has gone, is, is gone the other way.
So you're telling me nothing has changed?
Hmm?
Tell me, nothing has changed?
Well, it was changed. Edgecombe was wealthy, and then when the African American majority became, uh, let bill, let officers to this wealthy county, there were elements that didn't like that and put in place, trying to move the county line and take wealth. When you moved Rocky Mountain Mills out of Edgecombe to the Nash County, that was a big, uh, I mean, your county needs tax revenue, right, to do, to serve the people?
Still, nothing has changed?
No, still do it now. What I'm saying is, what we're saying is, the commissioners needed, maybe having, trying to educate people, so they know that there was injustice done in eighteen seventy-one, and that's part of why the imbalance is, so that, that's part of, uh, you know, something to, to be aware of.
You got a question?
Would you want to show, what? Okay, it's on the railroad. That's where it ran, and you can see Rocky Mountain Mills was in Edgecombe County, and, um, it cut right through there, um, you know, all the Whittakers, Battleboro, Edgecombe County, Sharpsburg, um, and all the industry that's developed over the last hundred and forty-eight years on the west side of the track would have been given taxes to Edgecombe, but we haven't had that benefit because of how this line has changed in eighteen seventy-one.
Well, I'd just like to say, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you and the physical side, because I go to a lot of their sessions, and, and it's really given me quite, uh, a lesson in history as relates to our county, and, and they're really interesting sessions. And I would suggest to anybody in the community, um, wouldn't you, if you know about them, um, attend them, because there's, there's just so much history in our county that, that even those of us that are African American don't know about us as relates to the building of this county. But I encourage all of our citizens to, to attend if they can, because they are, they are very interesting sessions, and they do have researchers from local researchers and many researchers from ECU and our state universities that assist them with this, uh, research, and it's, uh, I just encourage you to support this organization and to attend this session. Thank you, Mr. Ed.
I just, so when you go back in further negotiations, Nash County Commissioners and the school board and stuff around money for schools, put this on the table, you know, where would we have been for the last hundred and forty-eight years if, if we had that land and that tax revenue in Edgecombe County?
And we will. Excellent. Thank you so much.
So next on your agenda, I'd like to, uh, call Mr. Art Bradley to the podium, he's our Department of Transportation Director, and he's going to introduce to us tonight our 4H, 4H youth voice representative.
I'm Art Bradley, County Executive Director here in Edgecombe County. Happy to be here tonight, and on behalf of the Edgecombe County 4H Program, uh, for the past ten years, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has encouraged and supported youth development opportunities at your annual meeting, and that involves a 4H from every county and a, uh, representative from the boys and girls, uh, one from each organization. So this year, our 4H representative will be Mallory Lancaster, and she will attend the event on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So at that, uh, there, they will include a training which Jefferson recognized their strengths and how they can work and communicate with other people who have strengths in other areas. This, uh, she'll also participate in a simulation game called Bottom Line. This simulation will allow them to sit in your seat as Commissioner and determine the priorities for their county and how funding will be allocated or not. Uh, they will also have breakfast with any of you who may be attending the meeting on that Saturday morning. So we're excited that Mallory will be attending you boys as our Edgecombe County Representative, and I'm gonna let Mallory tell you a little bit about her.
Hello, I'm Mallory Lancaster, President of the Johnny Kids 4H Club and President of the Edgecombe County 4H Chief Council. This month, I will be attending the NCA Association of Journey Commissioners 4H Youth Boys Conference in Greensville. 4H has become a big part of my life. I love the different things I get involved in. I have participated in 4H development programs for the past several years. I volunteer as a 4H team leader here in Edgecombe County to help shop around younger kids and help lead, lead camp activities. As a team leader, I have learned to be patient working with kids and have gained a lot of experience in teamwork with my peers and 4H leaders. I have attended district and state 4H leadership and citizenship conferences and participated in the 4H presentation program. I have shown votes since I was five, and now I am teaching younger kids what I have learned and the responsibilities of owning and caring for an animal. I look forward to learning about leader, leadership and decision-making in govern government at the Youth Boys Conference. I'm thankful for the opportunities to attend this event and represent the Edgecombe County. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, thank you for being to, uh, represent us, and based on your presentation, I think
you did an excellent job. He'll see you there, he'll see you there. Thank you. Next, Mr. Ed.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out before I invite our next guest to come, the Edgecombe Veterans Museum had sent to me earlier in the year, um, an email asking for information on when we would open up the process for taking requests for outside agency funding. They received that, I tucked it away somewhere, and then when it came time for that, I overlooked it and forgot to invite them to the process. So I did want them, to give them the opportunity to come before you to make that request, and so we have here tonight Mr. Donnie Hale, who's the President of Veterans Museum, who may have some others with him. In particular, they're gonna talk about an event that's coming this fall, it's called the Wall of the Hills, uh, Vietnam Veterans Travel, Traveling Memorial, that's gonna be coming here, uh, to Tarboro in October. So I'd invite it to Hale and whoever else.
Are you saying this is a late request?
It is, well, they submitted it on time, I'm bringing it to you.
Good evening. I'm with Veterans Museum, and we'd like to tell you what we're gonna do. The week of the seventeenth of October, we will bring the traveling wall to Tarboro. This wall is three hundred and seventy-five feet, and it's seen that it's seven and a half feet, three-quarter size of the wall in the vicinity. Now, we're looking to bring somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand people to Tarboro, Edgecombe County, showcasing that week. This is one of the events, also our event to lose. We have prepared some packets for you, you can just kind of take a look. Uh, a little bit of history, the museum has over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand artifacts from Edgecombe County. These go back some as far as the Revolutionary War and up as far as Afghanistan. We also have one of the largest military murals in the state, and we do have the largest portrait displayed, military portrait displayed in the United States. I invite you to come and see what we've got. I think we'll impress you. If we can't, we'll try again. Our request tonight is five thousand dollars, and I know it's hard to, to, uh, request that much money, but if we can bring thirty thousand people here, like that one week, it's not only what we do that one week, it's how many we bring back the following year that'll come in and take a look at us. And we do, we'll have an opportunity to showcase the whole camp. Thank you very much.
Uh, let me suggest that, um, Mr. Ed, if you, we're gonna have a call meeting? If you have a recommendation, put it on there, on that agenda. Would that be an objection?
No.
He'll put, he'll put your recommendation, we, there'll be a call meeting on, on this month?
All right.
Yeah, he'll put whatever he's recommending on that, on that agenda.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next we have, uh, Race Lewis, who's our Tax Manager, who is the Executive Director of our County Annual Settlement.
Um, you have a copy of our annual settlement required by state statute, and you're in the Congress. As you can see, the collection rate for annual taxes went down slightly from ninety-five point thirty-three percent for FY seventeen eighteen to ninety-five point eight percent for FY eighteen nineteen. It's probably decreased to a point oh five percent. Just for informational purposes, I have provided a, um, motor vehicle tax collection rate through the VTS system for FY eighteen nineteen, which is ninety-nine point forty-nine percent collection rate, a point oh four percent increase from this past fiscal year. With this increase in the motor vehicle collections, our overall collection rate ended with a combined rate of ninety-five point eighty-two percent. We were also able to decrease the amount of taxes written off due to the tenure cycle limitation by six thousand four hundred point four dollars and thirty cents. Um, I've also put in there a copy of how the GAAP deals, and I'm not sure if any of you have received any of those this past year, but that did play a role in our decrease just a slight. Um, but this was revenue that we have lost for as long as I have been employed with the county. So I'm grateful that the state saw the, the need to implement this GAAP billing procedure as well as, um, not liking how it would have been my collection rate. But, uh, we did work aggressively, we billed seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and twelve cents. We only collected forty-six thousand six nineteen forty-three and left a uncollected balance of thirty-two thousand one ninety-six sixty-nine. That percentage was fifty-nine point fifteen percent. If you guys remember, when we collected motor vehicles prior to two thousand and fourteen, our collection rate on motor vehicles were averaging about seventy-eight percent. Um, and so this being new, these deals range from a dollar to five hundred dollars. Some people have gone thirty-six months, forty-eight months without renewing their tax, and that is what this GAAP is doing, so it's capturing that amount of money, um, that they're not paying their taxes, they're not renewing their tax. So we are getting these taxpayers that are trying to get through that loophole, so, um, if we had not billed that on our tax levy this year, if, we would have had an increase by point ten percent. So that just gives you a little, um, insight on how hard we've been working and trying to keep that a steady rate. Um, so, like I said, we ended with an overall of ninety-five point eighty-two percent, which ends up being a point oh one percent increase, including the VTS taxes, um, along with our, our taxes that I'm charged to collect. I also am very pleased with what my staff has accomplished this year. They've worked hard at what they do in our office as well as the classroom. Couldn't have done it without all their hard work. I'd like to recognize the end, if they can stand, please. At the end, we have our Deputy Tax Collector, Lisa Warren, um, Hunter Moore, I'm sorry, she's a new employee, I'm afraid. Um, Ms. Lisa Skinner, she, um, received her certification from, as a tax assistant this year at the North Carolina Tax Collectors Association. Um, Ms. Donna A. Moody, she, um, graduated this year with her business degree in Business Administration. And Ms. Vanessa, um, Richardson, she is currently enrolled in school now, so hopefully they'll continue working hard in the classroom as well as in our office for the year coming. Thank you, ladies. Um, I also want to say, you guys, for all years before, Mr. Evans, for all his support, he doesn't like getting my emails, I'm sure, my phone calls from our customers, but that's, um, part of the, the hard work going along with collecting these, collecting our taxes. Um, and this year, I've got, um, something, some statistics to share with you, you guys typically don't, but I'm sharing a printout and showing you what is all done in our office. Um, we did, we had twenty-four filings of bank records totaling forty thousand dollars, sixty-eight dot, forty thousand, oh sixty-eight ninety-eight. That negatively impacts our office. Um, we issued a hundred and sixty-six payment plans. We turned in seven hundred and forty-four new debts to the state totaling nine thousand three hundred and three dollars and eleven cents, what we collected. We did, the total amount of the debt was twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, so we got not quite half of that back. We did seventeen hundred and fifty-three garnishments, and that is not very easy when you go taking people's money out of their pay, out of their bank accounts and their paychecks. Um, we did thirty-six sheriff executions, and I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Office for helping collect that amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, or fifty-one dollars, excuse me, fifty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Um, and then our aggressive foreclosure proceedings. This past year, you guys made the decision to, um, bring Mr. Peters on as our county attorney, and so we were able to only submit a, a fewer amounts to our previous contractor, Ms. Boyett, of thirty-six parcels. That was owing nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. She had, um, helped assist collect twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars out of that. Mr. Peters, since he has been on staff with us, we've submitted two hundred and ninety-seven parcels to his office, owing one point two million dollars, and we've collected already as of June thirty, four hundred and four thousand dollars with his assistance. And so those are some things that our office does, and we'd like to thank you guys for, you know, continuing your support of us, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So we collected one point two million dollars of back taxes this year for the prior ten years?
Yes, sir.
And we charge interest on those?
Yes, sir.
It's accruing every year?
Every month.
Every month?
So it's nine percent a year, um, if it accr, is on, every year, every month, it's point seven five percent, so it's nine percent a year.
Do we set that interest rate?
The state sets that.
The state does. I was just curious what the actual, what we-
What the actual levy is versus what was interest paid?
Right.
I could, um, get that information for you.
That's okay. I just was curious if it was interest equivalent.
Okay. On our write-offs at the top, where we wrote off, um, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that is principal only, that is not included in interest, though. I did report that without interest, I won't.
When we do our annual budget, do we factor in that we may collect one point two million dollars of back taxes?
We here are usually a little bit more conservative than that, to see for ourselves freedom, but we do factor in, we budget collecting pre-budgets.
Thank you. Another question?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I had to call the tax office this past week and talk to a couple ladies, and I was absolutely thrilled that they gave me the way they did and the manner they conducted themselves. And I told the ladies, I really appreciate it.
I appreciate that, yes, sir.
Another question? All comment? Here and now, will there be two motions? The first motion is to approve the tax collector settlement as of June thirty-two thousand nineteen, change the subject to the independent audit. Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Questions? All in favor, there be no matter of votes, sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. The next motion is to recharge the tax collector with the outstanding taxes and the responsibility for collecting the same for the years two thousand nine through two thousand nineteen. Is it a motion?
It's a motion.
Questions? All in favor, there be no matter of votes, sign aye? All opposed? Here and now. Thank you for an excellent year. Thank you and the staff for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Peters, also. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, um, we have put a petition. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to the board, would you please come forward and state your name and address for the public record?
I'm College News. My identity is to do-.
Go ahead.
Evening, Chairman, we need some more members. What I would like to speak about tonight is real, valid agenda, and Mr. Evans will mention it at that time. However, I'd like to present mail, as I have other obligations I need to accommodate. If there's another time you would like for me to have a more complete presentation, I'd be honored to have that scheduled for each meeting. My name is Holly, and my husband died by suicide in January two thousand and sixteen. We view a loved one's suicide as compared to a day being plunged into a damn agony. Suicide has been described as a death like no other, and it truly is. Death by suicide stuns, for soul crushing surprise, leaving family and friends not only grieving the unexpected death, but confused and lost by this haunting loss. Despite science has supported a basis for mental health illness, suicide is still shrouded by stigma. Much of the public believes that death by suicide is shameful and sinful. Others consider it a choice that was made and blame family members for its outcome. Some people are unsure how to reach out to and support those who have lost a loved one to suicide, so simply avoid the situation. It is important to note that the structure of grief for suicide survivors of loss is extremely complicated. Please consider these facts. Suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States. Every forty seconds, someone dies by suicide, leaving six to eight loved ones grieving a devastated loss. Adult loss survivors are nearly ten times more likely to consider suicide themselves in the initial months following loss. Suicide claims the lives of our military vets at the rate of twenty-two a day. Farmers are taking their lives at five times the rate in the population. Death by suicide has no social, economic, or medical reasons. I've run myself to adjust my terminology. The word committed implies a crime, a deed performed in malice. Died by suicide or took his or her life gives the power of words that these broken souls were taken by and eaten for. On September seventh, there is a tri-county suicide awareness walk that will be held at Pine Topps. It is soon court for this walk to be successful and become an annual event for this community. I've got seen a handout here for you if you would. What Mr. Evans has handed out is walk literature, and I've asked you to give it to all the natural avenues, churches, business friends, and family. I invite you to come out on September seventh. Walk with us, fellowship, and participate. Help show this community we stand united in suicide awareness. I introduce myself as a widow by suicide. I close this talk to you, but I am also a suicide loss survivor. Let's make this a strong and impactful event. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for the comment. Please, Mr. Evans, prepare some type of resolution to support what this effort to do, what we can't have to board this, this effort, okay, because I think it's just a learning process for me in terms of the way it was explained. So I think the board would support this.
Excellent.
Is there anybody else here to speak?
I'm Councilwoman Deborah Jordan. I live at six fourteen East Road Street in Tarboro. I stand before you because I came earlier this year asking your support for special limpets. Well, we have formed a committee. And after that, I'm excited about it. And we are meeting August fifteenth with the ECPS Dereito ECPA, Tarboro Parks and Rec, Tarboro City Manager, Edgcombe County Manager, for a career, to plan which will be the special emphasis and a possible coordinator for ECPS students and community. And then after that, I chose to come today so you will be aware that it will be scheduled on the fifth day, and may Mr. Evans report back in September to go. So I feel solicit your support and move along. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who's got a petition?
I'm both second. Address is one-two-seven Midway Lane, Tarboro, North Carolina. My mailing address, P O Boston, one-three-nine-one, Pine Topps. I live three miles up Pine Topps, seven miles up Tarboro. But I got Tarboro address. But I just want to say, it was all in the paper this week about my services, video meetings, and Mr. Evans responded to it. I had received a phone call for this background. So I just want to let you know, I have no problem with videoing the meetings. Even if you all start the video, I'm still going to video it because the public can do it. And I have five thousand followers on my blog and more than that that read it, that I read my blog and look at my videos on YouTube. So no matter what, if you all start recording your meetings, I'm still going to record it for my purposes, and start to share it with folks. So I just want to let you know, whatever y'all do, it don't concern me, whether you do it or not, what newspaper they call me, and I tell them, I got no problem with you all do. Same thing with Rocky Mountain City Council, I video theirs too. Whatever y'all do, those who y'all think, I'm going to do my thing, because I'm going to make sure the people that can't be here, I sacrifice and be here, but I'm going to make sure people that can't be here, they rely on me to provide, you know, good information. And so I'm going to make sure the newspaper give you decent pieces, but my videos don't lie. Appreciate it.
And I don't think this board has an opposition from nobody that we do. So that can't continue. I don't know, we have not decided on anything that we're going to do anyway, so I don't know what the argument is about. Any changes would have to come from this board. Anybody else to speak at public petition? Here and now, moving on. Consideration of approved budget amendments, is there anything you brought to our attention or statements?
I do want to point out a couple of them that could have been said. If you'll look at in your packet, the very first one has some self manager, blue funds correct GL account. I do want to point out, you'll notice this is for JCPC of Juvenile Front Prevention. Council funds leave a pass through funds from us to these organizations that are recommended and ultimately approved by this board to receive funds. You do provide some match. I just wanted to show you that what has changed is that there was an organization that had previously received funds through JCPC. The program is called Resolve. It was not recommended that they receive funding for this current fiscal year, but instead, another organization, their program is called Who, or We Have Options. And so we just needed to make a correction in our budget. It was added in our budget that you had already approved, a program for Resolve. So we're just changing that from Resolve to the We Have Options program. So there's no additional county funds to be appropriated from that. If you turn from there, I want you to, five pages from there, you'll see it is, has Mr. Wade Johnson's name in county manager's office at the top. You'll see it's funds for Princeville project. I do want, I did notice that we actually have this particular budget amendment duplicated. So I'll ask you for this one, that would be adding twenty thousand dollars to the budget for predevelopment costs to be disregarded. And if you turn from there to, from there, ten pages from that page.
I think you need to write down the, you need to also, so that the motion can reflect what you are telling us not to.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So rather than, you probably need to give us the county numbers to delete from it that you don't want us to approve.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
And so instead of the one I asked you to just, to disregard budget amendment, there's a second one you'll see for Princeville Sewer Project. And what this is, just to let you know, you know we have funding that's coming to us from primarily USDA rural development to do basically a full rehab of the sewer system in District Six, which is in the town of Princeville. We are just about at stage of bidding that out. Once that's bid out, we know the final number, that's when USDA rural development will finalize the grant and loan amount. And so, but there is, there are predevelopment costs that we appropriate from fund balance. And then once that funding is finalized, then we do a notice to reimburse or an intent to reimburse, and we're reimbursed from proceeds of that to the county. So we do need to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for those predevelopment costs to get us to that point. Beyond that, I don't have any others I would point out, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
But based on all you just said, give me a motion.
Yes, sir. So my recommendation would be to approve all of the budget amendments as presented, with the exception of the one that notes twenty thousand dollars to be appropriated from fund balance to the Princeville project that's in your packet.
Motion? Second. Question? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next, moving on.
Next on the agenda is, we have received funds from FEMA HMGP program for the elevation of properties in the town of Princeville. This is considered phase one of the Princeville elevation project, wherein seventy-five approved properties will be assessed for the feasibility of being elevated as a mitigation measure. The grant total is one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Just to remind you, the town of Princeville, at their request, we're already administering the rest of their HMGP programs. So I recommend that you accept this grant agreement by adopting the enclosed grant project ordinance and budget.
Motion? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item C is regarding a contract amendment for Kingsborough, contract amendment number three for Kingsborough project. As you know, we're working on developing infrastructure on two Kingsborough industrial parks, including water and sewer extensions, with funding from the Goldley Foundation and North Carolina Department of Commerce under their industrial development fund. We recently received additional grant funding to include extending infrastructure to the Kingsborough training facility, as well as to add a secondary water line to the Triangle Tower Plant. The company is currently under contract for engineering on this project. With the additional work, their content needs to be amended. Therefore, included for your consideration is amendment number three, which will add two hundred and eight thousand dollars for engineering and construction administrative services, for a total not to exceed contract of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. I recommend the approval of amendment number three to the contract with.
Motion? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item D is regarding endorsing welcome signs for the town of Princeville. The town of Princeville has been working with faculty from North Carolina State University on multiple projects, one of which is developing welcome signs for the town. Enclosed, you will find the proposed signage. North Carolina Department of Transportation requires that both the town and the county approve the proposed signs. Therefore, for your consideration, is a resolution to endorse the signage project. The Princeville Board approved the project at their July fifteenth meeting. I recommend that you approve the resolution as presented.
Motion? Second. Question? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item E, we have implemented strategic improvements in our information technology policies and practices to be more efficient and to better protect our network. A key factor in protecting our network is the collective practices of our end users, which would be our employees. Ms. Taffeta Summerlin, our chief information officer, worked with the committee of staff members to develop the enclosed acceptable use policy. The goal of the policy is to protect the data shared and housed within our network. I recommend that you approve the attached acceptable use policy, which will be added to our personnel administrative policies. I would like to recognize Ms. Summerlin, who I believe is here tonight. I think she is. She's put a lot of effort into this and lots of other things. I'm sure you've been seeing lots on the news lately about companies being hacked, but also some county governments being hacked. So she's been working very hard, her team, the committee she's working with, trying to, she and I often talk about looking for where there are windows open and doors unlocked, make sure we close those windows and lock those doors, and so this is part of it.
This is a new policy.
This is a new policy. Our current personnel policy makes brief mention of acceptable use. This will replace it.
Any questions? Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Consideration of approving the county ownership, that's a plus. Is there a motion? Question? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next, considering.
Yes, sir. We propose that the Health Department continues to provide school health services for Edgcombe County schools. Annually, we review our agreement and then present for your approval. We will continue to provide eight school nurses who will administer the services described in the agreement. This is funded partially by a grant and the remainder by the school system. I recommend you approve the agreement of Edgcombe County School System as presented.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item H, Corporate Extension Office has been awarded five thousand dollars by the Biden Health Foundation through the Community Benefit and Health Initiative grant. Purpose of the grant is to improve the outreach of the FNEF or expanded foods and nutrition education program. FNEF strives to improve nutrition and increase physical activity for limited resources families. The county is to provide a two hundred and fifty dollar match to the project that will be provided through funds already budgeted to Corporate Extension. I recommend that you accept this grant or by adopting the project ordinance and budget amendment that are attached.
Motion?
Excellent.
Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item I, which is a resolution to authorize electronic payments. Last year, you authorized electronic payment by way of your approval of our purchasing card for key cards policy. These are used to satisfy procurement for select, low dollar purchases. These have worked very well, and our department heads have followed the policy as approved. We do need to more formalize your authorization of these electronic payments by way of the attached resolution. I recommend that you approve the resolution as presented.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Next on your agenda is regarding donation of lights to the town of Princeville. We own two vacant parcels in Princeville, which were acquired through tax foreclosure. The lights are identified by parcel numbers four-seven-three-eight-fifty-two-seventeen-fifty-seven and four-seven-three-eight-five-two-one-five-eight-nine. The town is interested in receiving these parcels for future use in public benefit to assistance. North Carolina general statutes allows the county to convey property to another local government agency. I recommend that you approve the attached resolution, which will authorize the conveyance of the above mentioned properties to the town requested.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Next.
Item K is regarding change order number five for Speed Sewer Project. Presented for your consideration is amendment to, amendment number five to the contract with Route Dodge Construction Company for the construction of a sewer collection system in and around the town of Speed. The changes are detailed in the attached document. This change order will result in increase of three hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents, increasing the total contract price to four million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. I recommend that you approve the contract amendment as presented and authorize the chairman to execute the sentence.
Motion?
Excellent.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know, no matter vote, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, it is approved. Moving on.
Item L, we have been selected to receive an additional appropriations of-
Item L, we have been selected to receive an additional appropriations of seventy thousand dollars from North Line Housing Finance Agency for the Urgent Repair Program. This program we administered several times, and so, I recommend that you first approve the assistance and procurement policies, then take action to accept this grant award by adopting the project ordinance and budget amendment and authorizing me to execute the funding agreement. So, there would be...
Two motions.
Two motions, yes, sir. First, to approve the assistance and procurement policy.
Motion? Second, questions? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Next motion?
Then to accept the grant by approving the project ordinance and budget amendment.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Contracts are reviewed and are approved, anything to be brought to the board's attention?
I do want to point out, you'll see that they are grouped by those that are under fifty thousand, which I am authorized to approve, and those over fifty thousand and have to answer any questions that you might want to do.
Any questions before I get a motion? Get a motion to approve? Second?
Sir?
Questions? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Alpha List and releases, anything for...
No, sir. They have to answer any questions.
Motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. Departmental reports for review. Anything you need to, go right ahead.
I would like to point out a couple of things. First, you have your usual report in your packet for the Water and Sewer Department from Mr. Mike Matthews. In addition to that, you have in place a report you'll see at the top that says enact up water and sewer accounts. I certainly won't read through that for you, but I do want to point out, so, what Mr. Matthews and his staff are doing is they are going back by district, because we have over four thousand, five thousand water customers, I believe. He's going back by district to see, try to identify any accounts for which they don't have an account set up, but they will go back and read these meters to see if there's been any water usage. So, you know, that can happen, sometimes people go in and turn the water on themselves, and, you know, and we not regularly read that account because they don't have an account set up. So, they're going through district by district to identify if there are any accounts that there's been some water usage and building with these customers. So, I wanted you to be aware of it, you know, as he's been doing that, we've been getting some calls. It's necessary for us to do this, but this is, you know, every gallon of water comes to us, we have to pay for it, and we have to charge. And this is a part of the overall effort any of the staff are working on, trying to improve our water loss issue. You see that report every month. So, I just wanted to...
What kind of call that you get for us reading the meters that ain't nobody's supposed to be there?
Sir, it's them.
What kind of call would you get for reading the meter that's nobody's supposed to be in that house?
Oh, we've got several calls already say, you know, they don't understand how there was any water, they didn't know, you know, our meter is wrong or something.
But we got an account, nobody's coming in.
That's true. And sometimes it's, sometimes it's rental property, it might be miscommunication between the landlord, the tenant, the tenant moves in, and, you know, transfer accounts or something, they never come in. It's a number of different things, but what's important to us is identify water that's going through the meters that we should be charging. So, that's a new report, I just wanted to, or your potential...
Anything else?
Yes, sir. Item E, under Department Reports, you'll see in there from our Planning Department, Ms. Cynthia Jones, our Planning Director, has given you some information to recognize a Ms. Wastina Lynch, who we're very proud that she represented the county and participated in the National Senior Games. She is from the town of Caneta, and I believe Ms. Lynch is here tonight, Ms. Lynch. Do you like to stand up, Ms. Lynch?
Please, please.
We had the privilege of meeting Ms. Lynch during our intensive senior family rehab with that recovery program. We all citizens here in our apartment, but Ms. Lynch, she has stuck here with us and just getting to know her personally. She came to office one day saying she going to Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I said, you going by yourself? And she said, yes. And I was really surprised at all the senior games that she has participated in and represented Edco County. And I thought it was an honor to have someone as Ms. Lynch, representing the Edco County. She participates in state games, local games, as well as going to New Mexico Lounge by herself. Wow. So, as you see, all her awards, she thinks were won at the local, at the state level. And she has participated recently in a couple.
May.
May, in New Mexico by herself. So, she has represented the county well, and I want to present and show off someone that we've had the honor of working with, getting to know her. So, anytime she come to our office or to, at the end of this, outside of our housing school, we try to sit down and take time to help her, and we can't help her. So, she's a little special lady to herself. I just want to introduce her to y'all.
Look like she brings life to that office.
She does. It has been a pleasure working with her and get some local repairs, but along with doing repairs, also getting to know our system. That's really important to us, to get to know the one person that we had opportunity to do our leader, do your package. I did a mini interview with her, and that's all the information she shared with us. So, I tell you, I'm a little...
Anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to say I'm honored. I'm honored that the county board would do such a thing for...
Well, we are more honored to have you as a citizen of this county, and I don't fly by myself, don't you care? We all get to a citizen of this county, okay? I gotta hold something there. Go ahead, Deborah.
I didn't want to know if you married.
I'm not. I'm a winner.
You don't have to answer.
And I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed all of the games and the track running that I've gone in the past years. And like Ms. Jones said, May, I achieved seventeen medals in the local games here. I ran track over here in Tarver, I ran Rocky Mount, and also the games that were played over in Wilkes, North Carolina. I was qualified in the games on twenty eighteen. I got, I received approximately twenty-one medals in the local games twenty eighteen. I received approximately fifteen in the state games in Raleigh, Durham, and Clay, North Carolina. That qualified me this year to go to the national games that were held out in Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Wow.
I'm going to the, I'm going.
Thank you.
She's very active in her community, and she drives food lift at how we use to leave. About every day, she brings early college students to campus. She's a very beautiful young lady.
Any other comment? Thank you so much. Anything else from Department or Report?
No, sir. Unless you have any...
Any questions from the board? Anything? Managers' report, move it on.
You've already heard about Tri-County Community Walk and certain things, colleagues, the others that are involved in that, you have to fly in your packet. I do want to mention, item B is regarding complaint for the discharge of firearms. You had a gentleman that lived on, lives on Bynum Farm Road, he came to the board last month, presented a complaint about some activities regarding firearms. Just wanted to update you, Sheriff has had a deputy to go out and talk to both of the residents, both the gentleman that was here and the neighbor. I did also talk, Mr. Price, I believe was his name. He still has some ongoing concerns. I did let him know that, you know, we are now aware, looked into, he was and I looked into what the state statute says about that. It does give county the opportunity to have an ordinance that could restrict that, and so, at this point, I guess I would just recommend that we study that a little further, but just wanted you to know we have ongoing conversation with the Price and Sheriff about the situation.
Any questions?
So, is the situation volatile as it was?
Well, I don't believe it's as volatile as it was, but he still has concern about some shooting that's going on.
There's nothing legal that the sheriff can do.
It's allowable, we have nothing in our ordinance that would restrict that. Certainly, if there's anything that took place that was a immediate danger to someone, but, you know, that's, we'll leave that to the sheriff and the staff to investigate that.
Any questions? Move it on.
Item B, just want to let you know, we gave you permission at your last meeting to request of the Town of Tarver, the National Guard Armory, if they would be willing to turn their ownership interest in that building. I have submitted that request, I will have a copy of my letter to the town manager in your packet. I will be attending the board meeting on August nineteenth to present that request to the full board, so I will certainly report back to you after I attend that meeting. Item G, regarding the timeline for solid waste permits. You'll remember in our budget preparation process, we talked about allocating funds in solid waste budget to go with a decal or permitting system that will hopefully help to control, you know, outside of county residents using our solid waste facilities, which should not, other counties are doing that. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Wade Johnson, our Assistant County Manager, who's working with us, who has been our solid waste director, and he's going to give you a brief overview of the timeline for implementing the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, as you all remember, we began talking about this last year, and in your budget this year, we have approved twenty thousand dollars to start this project. Over the last six weeks or so, I've been doing research and reaching out to a lot of different counties and municipalities that have similar systems to this. And I plan to make a recommendation to Eric on how our system would run this month, and for him to make a recommendation to you in September. My plan currently is to have these permits mailed to our citizens around the end of November, first of December, and then have the actual permitting start, meaning you need a permit to come to our convenience site, starting in the middle of January. Give people time to get their permits in, call us if they need to get one for whatever reason, anything like that. So, and then I'm happy to take any questions or concerns that you may have as I go forward with this, that you make sure I like to have cleared up and answered before we make a recommendation.
What kind of media we're going to do to spread the word before we have the permits out there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Boswell. And I've expressed to Mr. Evans that this is a big change for our citizens. So, a lot of marketing is going to need be done. That's why I wanted to come here tonight and start that process, get it on, on the minutes of the meeting. I'll plan on running ads in the newspapers, I plan on using our Facebook platform as much as possible, also reaching out to other organizations in our county and asking them to help me market this as much as possible.
Any comments or suggestions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item H, you'll see, I hope you mark calendars, we've got our service awards that's coming up next week, something that we always enjoy being able to do with our employees, and we thank you all for always supporting that every year. So, that'll be on the fourteenth at eleven o'clock at the, at the Ag Center at Kingsborough. Item I, regarding the TDA legislation change you have in your packet, the recommended language change for our Tourism Development Authority authorizing legislation, which would allow, which would allow for funds to be designated that are collected within City of Rock Mount, Edco County side, and also Town of Tarver, those hotels inside Town of Tarver, for projects within the town. That does require a legislation change, and so, you'll see that there is a, also has been submitted to Representative Shelley Willingham, the letter from Chairman of the Tourism Development Authority, asking him if he would be willing to sponsor that legislation change. And so, that process has been sent, and that process is not yet started, but just wanted to let you know where we are with that, and we'll certainly keep you posted. The final thing that we want to share with you, the Complete Account Committee for the 2020 Census, we have met, they have met, staff and I, Ms. Cynthia Jones and I met as well with them. They have discussed different strategies. You'll see a draft of some of the strategies or their actual plan in your agenda, it's still a draft, they have to meet again this month, they'll be meeting to finalize that plan and timeline as included. But also, along with that, you'll see at the very end of your agenda packet, there's a resolution, including, Commissioner Webb had recommended, and we consider bringing before you a resolution that supports, you know, the promotion of the 2020 Census and the work of the Complete Account Committee. And so, there's a resolution in your packet for your consideration, and I would ask that you consider adopting that tonight.
Motion? Second? Any question about the resolution? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. At this time, is there anything from the Commissioners? Hearing none? Anything from our attorney? Hearing none? At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll be going into a closed session to discuss economic development, big amount of present now. I see one of our ex-county Commissioners come in, Rob Walker, would you please raise your hand? Is there motion to go into a closed session to discuss these issues? Questions? All in favor, that'd be number one, vote aye. All opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we will be going into a closed session. Thank you for your attention.